Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Westminster High School's J.R.O.T.C. who will present the colors for tonight's meeting.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Veronica, can you please call roll?
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Eck.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Here.
Mr. McCoy.
Present.
Mr. Valenti.
Present.
At this time is when we usually do the pledge of allegiance, but you were ahead of the game, and because of that, the students from Metz who did the pledge, could you please stand up and give them a hand? All right, moving on to item number two, agenda approval.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve the proposed agenda for the regular meeting dated September 11th, 2018.
Second. We have a motion, second. Any comments? No comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Eck.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Fantastic. Moving on to item number three, minutes approval.
Mr. President, I move the Board of Education to approve the regular board meeting minutes dated August 28th, 2018.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chancho.
Yes.
Mr. David Eck.
Aye.
Mr. Math.
Aye.
Mr. McCoy.
Aye.
Mr. Valenti.
Aye.
Fantastic. Moving on to the superintendent report done by Dr. Pamela Swanson.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. There's a lot going on in Westminster Public Schools, both inside and outside the classroom, and tonight I have much to tell you about. And before I get into the meat of my report, I do want to welcome and introduce, we have three new cameramen. Wave, guys up there, Jaime, Jesus, and Moses, and so we're glad you're with us for this school year, and look forward to seeing you at all of our riveting board meetings. In just a little bit, you will receive the first two school education reports of the year, Metz Elementary and Colorado STEM Academy. This follows the district overview that you received last meeting from Dr. Grinham. As you will see, even though we're off the clock and our schools have made a lot of progress, all of our schools are redoubling their efforts for the 18-19 school year. We cannot take our foot off the gas. That was certainly the message that I spoke about in my meeting last week with our teacher leadership cabinet in the school district, and again yesterday with the principal advisory group. Most of you were with me at the end of last month, when I joined superintendents in Jefferson County and Adams County School District 12 to deliver remarks at the Westminster Chamber of Commerce State of the City Luncheon, and the business community is very interested in hearing how we're preparing our students for the workforce. There were many heads nodding in agreement when I talked about our competency-based system and our insistence that a high school diploma means that students are truly prepared to step up and contribute from day one, in fact, the day after graduation. I'm happy to tell you that the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster is going strong. As you know, we are starting with recruitment of middle school students and their siblings, and will expand to new families in the coming weeks, and we're looking at options for an official ribbon-cutting ceremony this fall, and I will keep you posted on potential dates for that, so it works with your schedules. Hopefully that'll happen, I think, October? Is that what we're looking at? James, I guess I'm looking at you. October, early October?
Early October.
Oh, so check your calendars. Maybe October 9th. And a big shout out to our friends at the Highland Hills Foundation for a very successful Putts for a Purpose on Saturday. Thank you, Dino, for joining us there. It was perfect weather to welcome our students from Flynn and Colorado STEM Academy. As always, there was food, face painting, and of course, the big bike giveaway, and that was really highlighted this year by some of the foundation board members who supported in donating bikes, including our own Don Chancho up there, and we really appreciated Putts for a Purpose and all of the highlights that the event gave to our families, and a lot of happy faces on Saturday, as you can see from the pictures. Another fall tradition that is growing in popularity is Metz Elementary's Rods for a Cause Car Show that was overlapping with Putts for a Purpose. It was a busy Saturday in the school district. That was also held on this past Saturday. This was the fifth year for the event, and Principal Claudette Trujillo and her team raised, I believe, $1,400, is that right, to support activities at the school, and the event was created to honor Claudette's father, Ezekiel Trujillo, and Richard Rodriguez for their contributions in support of our community and school district. The 2018-19 Westy Uranum Alumni Golf Tournament is scheduled for Friday, September 21st, at the Greg Mastriana Golf Courses at Highland Hills, and it's a 1:00 p.m. shotgun, and there will be a patio party following the tournament at Chancho's Restaurant. And if you'd like to register for part or all of it, you can visit HighlandHills.org to register. Please note that the proceeds, as it states there, benefit both the Highland Hills Foundation and also the Westminster Public Schools Education Foundation. And I hope everyone will mark the morning of Saturday, September 22nd, to attend our annual homecoming parade. And you see a theme there. The theme this year is Harry Potter, and many of our elementary and middle schools will be joining the high school and community organizations for the event. And tomorrow's edition of What's Up WPS will have more on the parade, including a parade route map. The homecoming football game is Friday, September 28th, and the homecoming dance is Saturday, September 29th. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Swanson. Any questions or comments? With no comments, let's move on to the Board of Education discussion slash reports. Would any of you like to kick it off? Fantastic. Not all at once. I do want to acknowledge one thing real quick. If we're not going to have any commentary, Veronica, if you could pull up. As you know, on August 14th, the board signaled our direction to move forward with a mill levy override, and what you can find is information in regards to the mill levy and what the district will be doing and utilizing as it relates to those funds, and so please take the time to visit that. Veronica, is that accessible from the front page?
If you go to the main page, it is actually one of the highlights, so you can, if it doesn't come up right away, on the arrows, click on those. Click a couple times. I should have gone the other way.
It's all right. We're just trying to plug everything. This is good.
And so there is the announcement. Click on Read More, and it takes you to the page where there are items to look at on the left, as well as the right-hand side.
People, please register. If you have friends, neighbors in the community, make sure we get them out there and just inform them. But regardless, let's make sure everyone votes, regardless of their direction. I'm not soliciting anything right now. Holly Ortiz, our attorney. But the other acknowledgement I wanted to make is in regards to the committee. I know there's a lot of community members who have been out meeting regularly in regards to this campaign, and I want to thank all of them for their hard work, and we know that the sprint is coming, and we appreciate their energy and their expertise in moving this forward. Yes. Any other comments?
Foundation, we've been busy at work. I don't know what we've done, but we've had some meetings. Actually, we're in the process of setting everything up for the coming year. We've agreed that we will be doing the annual foundation golf tournament. I believe it's the first, it's after Memorial Day, the Thursday after Memorial Day, whenever that is in 2019. Pricing is to be finalized. Sponsors are already lining up. We appreciate everybody coming out for that. Our other events are also a go for the coming year. My brain is thinking about something else right now, so I apologize. What are our other events?
They do the breakfast, which is in March.
Yes, the breakfast will be in March. We're finalizing the theme, but we're working on tying it into our focus this year in the school district. And last year was a very successful breakfast. This year, we hope to go bigger. I was outvoted in having breakfast start at noon. The time will still be 8:00 a.m. with networking opportunities starting at 7:30, and it'll be at the Hyatt up off of 104th and Church Ranch Boulevard again this year.
Marriott.
Oh, Marriott, excuse me. I don't know, they all bought each other out. The Marriott, same place as last year. More details to follow. There's a couple raffles that are going on to raise money for the foundation, and we've welcomed a couple of new members to our board, and looking at some policy changes to allow those who don't have time to continue to serve to remain emeritus members of the foundation because of their contributions. That's about it.
Thank you. Are they still doing the benevolent fund?
Yes, and we do also have the Landgraph Opportunity Fund as well, and we're actually looking at bringing some focus to that. And right now, those activities remain ongoing, but there's a couple of the foundation president, executive director, and superintendent are working to actually streamline operations between the organizations so that they can work better together. And it's sometimes tricky when you're dealing with 501(c)(3)'s and money that can't cross certain paths, but I'm confident that we're going to get there and have a really successful year and benefit the students. We're working on scholarships and looking at increasing our ties with the Future Center there as well.
Great. Principals who are in the audience tonight, please make sure you take a look at that benevolent fund and access that fund and get those funds to the families. Every year that fund should be depleted, knowing the need of our community, and every year there's money left over in that account, so please make sure that you take a look at that and get the families to apply for it, because the opportunity is there, and it pays for things such as eyeglasses, eye exams, hearing aids for students. I think one of the things that really, I think, touched all of us, if you recall back a couple years ago, we did have a student who was not well and couldn't attend school, but the family couldn't afford the wireless connection, so they paid for that. And so these are things that that benevolent fund does for the community, so make sure that you access that. I'd like to see that balance go into zero this year, just so that we get the funds out there.
And Ryan makes a great point. If any of you principals have a question, as the liaison and board member on the foundation right now, contact me. If you say, hey, we're looking to do this or that, can the foundation help? And I'll get it over to Stephanie, and sometimes the board has to act, but there are certain things that she has autonomy to do on a day-to-day basis, and we'll do everything we can, because I think a lot of times, you just don't know that that help is out there, and that's why we end up with funds left. At the end of the day, our goal is to raise money and give it away.
Right. The only other item I have is on September 21st and 22nd, CASB is holding, which is the Colorado Association for School Boards, their quarterly meeting, and through this, one of the topics and conversations is what does CASB stand on as it relates to the State Board of Education and accountability, and what they should be doing for other school districts. And I've heard from the board in regards to our direction and recommendation and what we provide to CASB. And for those of you, maybe to provide some context of who CASB, the players at CASB, it's a number of regional individuals who represent school districts throughout Colorado. And so we have everyone from rural communities sitting there, to Cherry Creek, to WPS. And for the most part, we all stand shoulder to shoulder as it relates to local control, and I know that'll probably be our main recommendation in CASB and moving forward, but we also know that Kindelay, who's been the leader and champion for CASB, is retiring. Shame on him. We could use him another five years, I think, but the reality is, this is an opportunity for us to, for CASB really to step up and hopefully guide the direction of the State Board of Education.
He's been a good friend to our district.
Yes, he has.
He leaves big shoes to fill.
Huge.
And I'm sure a certain silver-haired fox attorney will miss one of his young former associates.
All right, with nothing else, audience comments?
We don't have any comments.
No audience comments tonight. Moving on. Do you have an audience comment?
Just the little one over there.
Oh, gotcha.
[laughing]
She's allowed to. That's why we're here. All right, we're moving on to educational reports. We have Metz Elementary School. Dr. Oliver Grinham, please come up.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson, at the previous Board of Education meeting, I mentioned that Westminster Public Schools is continuing with the second year of the Management Pathway Plan. The plan consists of four goals. The first is to ensure consistent and deeper implementation of our competency-based system with regard to all instructional aspects. The second is to attract, retain, and develop effective CBS educators and leaders. The third, foster a strong culture of academic success, including post-secondary workforce readiness for students and parents. And lastly, strengthen and expand early childhood education. Additionally, at our last meeting, we saw the success that this plan yielded when the district achieved a higher accreditation rating and got off the state accountability clock. Tomorrow, the state board will formally learn of our district's success at their regularly scheduled meeting. In fact, you can see the slide that CDE will use. I think, Veronica, you have it there.
Oh, wrong one. Sorry.
That's the Kirk slide.
They're both green.
Just like our district.
There you go.
And isn't it nice that the state is celebrating our collective efforts? And you'll notice they're even calling out our colors as a district. How nice. As was the case regarding the 2018 Performance Challenge last year, all schools will present the status of their latest achievement results and speak to the efficacy of their improvement efforts for the past school year, as well as the current school year. Each school has already provided you an executive summary, as well as data that pertain to staff and student statistics, as well as student achievement. And per the board's feedback, we've asked principals to limit their presentations to no more than 10 minutes, so that the board can maximize your time to ask questions. To launch this year's school presentation, we have Ms. Claudette Trujillo, Principal at Metz Elementary. This is Principal Trujillo's sixth year as principal there, and last year she laid out her plan to significantly improve the performance for school, and tonight she will share that story with us. Principal Trujillo, please come forward.
Good evening, Dr. Swanson, Mr. President, and school board members. I'd like to just take a minute and say thank you for giving me tonight to speak to the hard work of our students, of our parents, and of our staff. And so I'm very excited to share with you some of the results that we discussed just a couple months ago when I was here presenting. So the first thing, the first slide that you have in front of you is actually our English and Language Arts results by grade. So if you're looking at last year as compared to this year, you will see that students, we did show improvement in all of our grades. If you're looking at a specific cohort, so for example, if you're looking at the bottom, ELA 03, that stands for English Language Arts, third grade. If you look at those third graders up at the top of that, you'll see that's our exceeds and met category. And then if you follow those students over to the right side in 2018, you'll see that we grew both of the exceeds, sorry, both of the Metz, and then remained the same for our exceeds category. So not only are we looking at our students and how they're doing from year to year as a cohort, but we're also looking at how we're doing by grade. So we did a great job on that. If we're looking at English Language Arts, our met and exceeded, you'll notice up at the top, if you follow the arrow, the red arrow, all the way across, this does have trend data for several years. If you're looking at last year, we were at 9% of our students that met or exceeded, which is a very low number for English Language Arts. We did improve that up to 23, and so that's a 13.3% improvement for students meeting or exceeding for English Language Arts. And then if we're looking at our mean scale score for achievement, if you follow that number across, we actually did improve significantly, 15.7 points, going from 706 in 2017 to 721.8. And that's something we're definitely proud of. There's definitely room to go there, but if you look at the bottom corner to your left, you'll see the cut score for the next category and just how close we are to moving up in that category. That's something we're very proud of. Now, this is the part that we're most excited about, was our growth for ELA. So if you're looking at the last three years, you'll see we were at 42. We dipped down last year, and then we came back strong, going up to 73 by an improvement of 35. Our math results, you'll notice that same trend, we're showing some improvement. This has been an area that we've been working on. Most of our improvement comes in closing that lower category and reducing or closing the gap for our students that did not meet, and pushing them up into approaching category. So you'll notice that we're doing a lot of work to move kids up in this area, but math will continue to be a focus at Metz this year, and we're working on some of those strategies, especially at the intermediate level, to review that data and implement those things. Our percent of met and exceeded basically remained flat for math. That was something that called our attention, and although we improved the prior year, we didn't see the significant number that we expected it to be. This is set up just like the last one. If you're looking at the mean scale score, we did improve 7.5 points from the prior year to this year, but we're still several points away from that CDE cut score to hit the next category. But our growth came in, and so we have had significant growth in both math and ELA. Now, you can notice for math, we started at 46. We dipped down last year, same trend that we saw in English Language Arts, and then we came back strong, going up to 65.5 or an increase of 21.5. You guys have seen this a lot, but I will kind of go over it again. We're looking for blue. The darker the blue, the higher the score, the better we're doing in those areas. You'll notice that in 2016 and 17, for both math and English Language Arts, Metz did not have a lot of blue. And so this year, you'll notice that there is a lot of blue. Some of our successes are larger successes. You'll notice in fourth grade for English Language Arts, we had 81 was our number, and that's statistically a big number. If you look down, our English Language Learners also for English Language Arts were at 68. If you look to the right, the math score for our fifth graders was 72. So we've been really looking at what is going on in those fifth-grade math classrooms, and how can we replicate that, because those strategies are working. Our science results have continued to remain low, so this is a heavy area for us this year. We're going to be dedicating time specifically to science on Friday and really monitoring what that looks like. Some of that will be through project-based learning. We had a slight increase, but still not there. So our met and exceeded did improve by 2.9%, roughly, but that's still, we only have 6% of our students hitting met or exceeded for our fifth-grade students. And then our mean scale score did improve 10.4. So that's an area, if you look down, again, the cut score is there. We are a long way from that cut score, but you'll notice some other schools up here who had some big success, and we're going to be talking to them to see what they're doing specifically around science that we can replicate, because we did see some good improvement come in there. So I'm excited to share that our current academic status last year was priority improvement. We did jump over the improvement category, and I mean, we jumped over it, and we ended up in the performance or green category, and we went pretty deep into that. So we're pretty excited to have our new school performance framework score of 67.7. You'll also note at the bottom there, it says our academic achievement is does not meet. So that's our big focus this year is achievement, but in academic growth, we did hit exceeds. And I'm going to break that down for you in the next slide. So as you can see here, this is the growth report for CMAS, and all areas hit exceed. So our English Language Learners for ELA and for math, our free and reduced lunch, our minority students. So in all areas, we exceeded growth, and so we're going to continue to go after that growth, but our big focus this year is the hurdle of achievement. So here's a slide with some results from some surrounding schools. I thought this was just a good bird's-eye view to see how we're doing in comparison to outside of our district or schools in our local area. And as you can see, we're at 67.7 compared to some of our neighboring schools. So in summary of our success, we're green, and it's not easy being green. So I want to be clear, as Dr. Swanson says, and Kermit the Frog, that we are going to continue to stay steadfast on our focus. We did find some formula for things that were successful, which I'll go over in a minute, but we also, I mean, there's smaller celebrations within that data with our improvement, even in ELA and math with those scale scores, met and exceed, and then our growth. So our school focus areas, what did we do that worked and what are we keeping? We implemented the balanced delivery guide, and that is an incredible resource for how we should be structuring that content time with our kids. How should they be learning? And so I'd like to thank the principals and the directors that developed that. That's been an instrumental tool for our building. We also have worked on the new art and science and academic vocabulary in Marzano's Six Steps, so we're going to continue that work. One thing that we're doing at the primary level is our teachers are consistently looking at their DIBELS data and utilizing that to change their instruction daily. So they're looking at that quality formative data and implementing things as kids need them. We implemented extended learning time last year with 67% of our students attending based on data-driven conversations with them and what they needed. And so we're going to continue that work on Wednesdays and Thursdays, which was an additional 1,240 instructional minutes that we gave back to kids. Kagan has been a big thing in our building. The teachers love it. It gives students time to interact and really dissect their learning differently. And then one thing that myself and my coach from last year, Lisa, and my coach this year, Ariel, will continue to do is weekly conversations with teachers. We do weekly observations of all classrooms, and then we do feedbacks that include praises and probes to get them to reflect on their own practice. So that's some of the things that I talked about. I do want to talk about our partners. We have been working with Matt McManus from Mathematics University, and he's been instrumental in really moving the building and helping our teachers with the pedagogy of how do you teach math. Kathy Bratton from Amplify, and then Jill from our partner with Advanced So in conclusion, we put the met in Metz, and I do want to thank everybody, because it isn't possible without everybody coming together. There was a vision, there was a goal, and we really felt supported by the board, by directors, by directors, by pretty much everybody that came together to make the things possible to help with our success.
Thank you, and congratulations on your success. Board, any questions, comments?
None, fantastic.
Kenny?
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chancho wrote a laundry list of questions.
No, I just wrote some things down, but you, my questions, I think you covered most. Can you go back to the last, there, that? You breezed through this part. Can you, can you go into a little more depth about this?
Sure. So, a lot of this was referenced in the prior slide, and so this is about our observation and feedback sessions with teachers. Basically going in, we're in classrooms 20, a minimum of 20 minutes, all classrooms every week, and then we have scheduled conferences where we talk with them about the praise and the probe. So that's, that's creating a lot of inter-rater reliability. Another thing we've been doing is the Marzano tracker to look at the specific elements from the art and science and determine which ones are we focusing on each week and which ones have we not got to? Because I think we really needed that lens so that we're looking at quality instruction holistically. Another thing that has been successful is our data trackers with our DIBELS scores at the primary level.
And, and on the consultant observations and feedback, that's the consultants there too, that's the three you mentioned?
Yeah, so one thing that's been really helpful for leadership of the building is having Jill from Advanced Ed come in and coach us. So not only do we do that with teachers, but then she observes us giving that coaching session, and then she gives leadership advice around, you know, you kind of just gave them the answer, that you really need to lead them there and help them reflect. And so we're continuing to get better as leadership through that coaching work with Advanced Ed.
The, the district-wide math camp, after-school math program that we did last year, you, you all didn't participate in that, but you did the extended learning?
Correct.
Right, Ed?
Yeah, we didn't participate in the tutoring program, but what we did was basically an after-school remediation support.
And did that include the science last year too?
It did not.
Well, you, an amazing, amazing year, and every right to be proud about jumping to performance, but you and your team and staff and parents and you all did, except the person under the umbrella, you all did, you know, did a wonderful, wonderful job. And I look forward to continued success this year.
One clarification, if I may, Mr. President. Oliver, can you speak to how we test English Language Arts math as compared to science?
Yes, I can, I can speak to that. I think that the difference that's pointed out there is really in terms of we get growth scores for math and ELA. Science, we just test at the fifth grade only, and it is an achievement score that's there. So in terms of the buckets of points available on the performance framework, given the context of Metz School, I think Claudette was very wise to focus on the areas that would give her the most points in terms of the accountability system.
Oliver, are we not doing commitment scorecards this year?
Yes, we are. That process is underway. We have told our, our schools and our principals that we're doing year two of the Management Pathway Plan, and we're following exactly the same process that we did last year.
Fantastic.
Just, Claudette, and a couple slides further back, you, you talked about fifth grade was your, you had some of the biggest growth in that level right there. Were you, you were talking about being able to capture what's going on there. Have you been able to do that, or is it?
Yeah, actually, we have a very strong intermediate team that works together and collaborates weekly, and so we've been able to share what that looked like. They had a similar rollout in working with the consultants, specifically with math, but we saw that success in fourth grade for ELA. And so they've worked collaboratively to share those strategies and what they've been doing that's made the impact.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
I have one. What is the terminal airspeed velocity of an unladen swallow?
I don't give the answers, that would be cheating.
African or European?
Great response.
Joe got it right.
One thing I'd just like to say to the board to end on this, I'm sure you have more riveting questions, but I just want to share this at the end. Growth has to come before achievement. And so this was a big hurdle for us, and we're going to continue on that growth. But as you mentioned, the commitment cards, that's something that's in the works and in progress for our school because we did not meet our achievement goal. So we're going to hold to that goal until we hit it.
And I think my greatest concern, and probably echoes the same of the board's, is in regards to sustainability and making sure we continue to see that growth. And I think you know how to reach out to the, to the administration and board if you're needing resources or anything along those lines to make sure that we continue to see success at Metz. And I'd like to congratulate you, your teachers, your staff, the parents, and the children because this is a true accomplishment. It's great to see.
Thank you. We did bring a gift for you.
Thank you.
Some artwork from our babies. I'd like to thank Michalowski for her students making that amazing artwork for you. Our theme this year is the Greatest Showman, and so that is the world that they design.
I'll be there as a bearded lady soon.
Awesome. Me too.
Then I'll be something else.
And, and Mr. President, it's nice. I always have to give Claudette a hard time because I've known her a very long time, but it's nice to see this and the growth, not only the students but of the staff as well, and the community because about eight years ago, our predecessors were trying to get rid of Metz. So this has been very fun to watch, and it's been fun to watch her grow in the leadership position.
Right.
And she was very humble. The hours of time in the extended learning equated to something like 30 days, is that right? Yep. That's pretty, pretty awesome. Go Metz.
And to echo your point, Dino, a little bit, I remember when I first joined the board and we were going over, reviewing some of the schools and some of the test scores and, and issues around the district, and there was some, I think it was your first or second year, and there were some struggles, and Dr. Swanson reminded me that, you know, sometimes it takes a year or two for a principal to get their team in place, and that certainly paid off, so, and was very true, so.
Congrats.
All right, moving on now to Colorado STEM Academy. Dr. Oliver Grunham?
And now we'll hear from Colorado STEM Academy, led by Principal Brenda Martin. This is Principal Martin's third year as principal, and as she makes her way to the podium, I think it's notable that student achievement has increased each of the last three years under her leadership, and that speaks to the intentionality and sustainability of a focus in terms of really monitoring what it is that you're actually doing in your school plan. So Ms. Martin?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Dr. Swanson. It is my extreme pleasure to be here to present to you tonight. In 2013, our Board of Education had a dream. They knew that we needed to do something different, something innovative. That year, Colorado STEM Academy became the very first innovation school in Westminster Public Schools. In 2016, our staff worked together to revise our innovation plan, and it's hard to believe that we have already begun the process to revise it for a second time. This plan drives the work we do with a mission stating, "Colorado STEM Academy is dedicated to preparing students for continued education and workforce readiness through the integration of the STEM fields." Our theme this year is all about making dreams come true with a focus on this book by Susan Bozak. Veronica has copies for each of you. I'm thrilled to tell you that our dream of becoming a school of distinction in the blue category has finally come to fruition. But we certainly didn't do this alone. Colorado STEM Academy takes pride in our community partnerships through our project-based learning. This includes the National Center for Atmospheric Research, University Corporation for Atmospheric Research, and local partnerships, including the city of Westminster. We also want to recognize our district maintenance team, technology team, learning services, finances, HR, and countless others who have partnered with us to support our success. On behalf of our staff, I want to personally thank our district team and the Board of Education for your continued support. I'm also here today to recognize our parents. There are many options available to families these days, and our parents choose to share their children with us each and every day. Our staff and my assistant principal, Lindsay Lohman, for their dedication to our school and students, and finally, our students, because we believe that they can accomplish all of their dreams. As I mentioned earlier, we opened up this year with the book we read to our staff and our students. It was called Dreams. This book helps young students discover the possibilities within themselves as older students are reminded that their best is yet to come. One of our favorite lines from the book goes like this. "I was older once again. My favorite color was green, the color of go and the color of grow." And we're thrilled to present to you with our growth for this school year. As you know, we're looking for blue on these growth reports, and we're proud to report that our school has outperformed the state in every single area. I'd like to highlight our math especially if you look at the top right corner, 70.5 for our median growth percentile. We're also proud to report that our students in some of our very specific demographic groups showed huge gains, including our gifted and talented learners and our minority students. As you know, growth scores like these with an already high-achieving population of students is challenging to say the least. Our staff as a whole is incredibly proud to share the blue on this report. My very favorite line from the book goes something like this. "When I became a teenager, I liked blue. Everyone likes blue." And we're proud to say that not only did we land in the performance category once again, we jumped from 78.6 on the 2016-2017 school performance framework to 88 last year, earning us the title of being the first school in Westminster Public Schools to be labeled as a school of distinction, a blue school.
So are you all teenagers? Is that what you're saying?
Congrats.
We, uh, thank you. And I noticed you all wore blue in honor of us today, so I wanted to thank you for that support. We recognize that we are a unique school in Westminster Public Schools because we aim to serve both in and out of district students, so we're always evaluating the performance of other local schools. We know you viewed this slide at the previous board meeting, but we consider this work a celebration for our school and for the students that we serve. We find that as our parents are shopping around for schools, they're often looking for K-8 focus, STEM focus, or even a focus on GT learners. The schools on this slide are some of our local competitors, including local STEM Schools, Crown Point, and Jefferson Academy. Now, as a staff, we take challenges very seriously. As you can see, we knocked our growth goals out of the park in both math and English Language Arts. We're very proud of our achievement as shown on the scale scores. However, we have not yet hit those goals. Last year, we set a commitment to you. We set a commitment that we would achieve these goals, and we are determined to do this. After all, learning is the constant and time is the variable. Our teachers have committed time each week to reevaluate student data, set new goals, discuss strategies, and work to help students achieve them. Every single meeting is dedicated to learning about students and learning about teaching practices so we can all continue to grow. We have determined a few very specific areas of improvement based on our data. Our first is a dedicated focus on personalized learning, not only throughout the day through our competency-based systems, but also for students to set goals and work toward achieving them during our daily win block. Wins stands for what I need, and this block includes daily social-emotional lessons to help support the whole child. It includes time for specified support with our student support team and regular check-ins on student progress. Our second focus area is on vocabulary and writing support. As we completed our strand analysis on CMAS, DIBELS, and Scantron, our staff determined a greater need for both vocabulary and written expression. We know that this work needs to begin with our youngest learners, and it should continue long past our eighth graders' move to high school. Our staff has all been trained in Marzano's Six Step Vocabulary Process. We, and we also know that this work will work with our kindergarten teacher all the way to our middle school math teachers and our PE teacher. Everybody is dedicated to supporting student writing development. Our final focus areas are to continue our work around cooperative learning and project-based learning. In 2016, Forbes Magazine published an article. The article was reviewing the lack of soft skills from our college graduates. The article states that a shocking 46% of companies said that young workers would do well to hone their communication skills. It said some 44% of managers reported a lack of leadership and 36% had lower-than-needed interpersonal and teamwork skills. We need to fix this. Our Kagan training and training with project-based learning will help. Our staff has all attended trainings offered by certified Kagan trainers in addition to work with our school-based Kagan coaches. Our staff works regularly to plan meaningful units of study around the Buck Institute model of project-based learning. This work ensures that students are solving real-world problems and partnering with community partners and experts in various fields to deepen student learning and prepare them for that important day after graduation. Finally, my staff behind here, some of them wearing our shirts, they're known as the Dream Team, and we proudly continue our dream on becoming true innovators in education. Thank you for your time today.
Congrats. Board questions, comments?
This has just been fun. I guess it's what, six years ago now, there was a lot of, you know, gnashing and wailing and grinding of teeth about this new type of school we were proposing, this innovation school, and it was going to skim the cream of the crop off of other schools and hurt them. And I look and we see the chart that was in Claudette's presentation, and I saw a lot of green. And then we see your blue up there, and we see everybody else moving, and I think we've had just the opposite effect, that actually it's brought the best out of everybody in all of our schools. There's no secret that I'm a big proponent of innovation because it works, because I think we free you from us sometimes. That doesn't mean you're completely out of the boundaries, but we let you do what you went to school to do, and that's to educate. And I'm just delighted to see all this, and I hope you have another successful year. And it's been fun to watch you grow as well in your leadership role. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thanks to this board for your support as we've only been able to increase our flexibility with innovation throughout the years, thanks to all of you.
Congrats. Just a quick question regarding your attendance numbers. Of your 370, or last year, 81 students, how many would, what's the percentage of out-of-normal district boundary students?
Out of boundaries? We try to hover around 50/50 every single year within and out of district. We're currently closer to 45 for out-of-district families. We always aim to bring in students who have previously left the district back to the districts.
And, Dr. Swanson, remind me what the mobility rate, what, what does that mean on, on these reports? I, I don't, I can't remember.
The mobility, correct me if I'm wrong, Jenny, because I know the formula changed for Oliver a couple of years ago, but the mobility is what happens between August and the school year, essentially the school year, not the calendar year.
That is correct. It used to be you counted in the past formula the kids that moved over the summer, because in our community, we do have a lot of families that leave over the summer and new families come. But the new mobility formula that's been in action now for about four years counts the first day of school to the last day of school, and that's how the mobility is calculated. Mobility is for kids that move out of district or move back into district.
Say that again? Unduplicated means?
You count them one time, so it could be a family that moves out one time and comes back. That's an unduplicated count. You might have a family that moves out three or four times. That would be a duplicated count.
Duplicated counts.
Only in education.
Yeah, CDE, if there's a hard way, they'll find it.
Okay. Explain, we'll talk about that again later. Explain if.
It means we have some very highly mobile families that, that move out of our district more than once during the school year.
So for instance, Metz rate was 23%, and I think your rate was 7% or 10% at STEM. So the, the duplicate, that means if 23% of, we'll talk later, we don't need to go into this now, but thank you.
In and out, in and out.
In and out, four, more than three times.
We, we know that families that are more stable in a school, just like an adult in a job, there is greater performance that comes from that stability. So we encourage all our families to not be as mobile, but that takes resources to make that happen.
All right, and again, I echo the same commentary I did with Claudette in regards to sustainability and growth and continue to see that. And again, you know where, where to call if there's any resources that you need, but I'm not too worried about either school, and I get the opportunity to go through your hallways and see the families and how engaged they are. To me, I, I know that's extremely important for the success of a child, so it's, it's good to see the communities that both of you have built, and I look forward to continue to see your growth, and way to wear the district colors tonight. I, yeah, I was, I'm, I'm assuming you did that on purpose, so I wanted to make sure I acknowledged it.
You pronounced it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before Dr. Grunham goes away.
Dr. Grunham, come back to the podium.
Could, could we return to his slide?
Yeah.
His one slide? Where did it go? Please, sorry. There's one thing that caught my eye that I think is very important for everybody in this room. There's one thing that caught my eye that I think is very important for everybody in this room. So, when we look at what the other states are going to be dealing with tomorrow, unfortunately, it's not our heads on the chopping block this year, thank God. Talk about that meets 95% participation because you don't see that on everybody.
Correct. There is a federal requirement that all students in all schools should have this 95% threshold of kids taking a test. Colorado, a couple of years ago, the state board loosened that up to where kids can opt out of a test and a school or a parent is not penalized for that. So, the way Colorado records that, they have a low participation if you do not meet the 95% participation, and that can be in one or two content areas. And then, if you have substantially low participation because it's not parents opting their kids out, but kids just opting themselves out, then that will cause you to lose an accreditation level. But this has raised a lot of questions in terms of what is fairness in the system? Do all kids in Colorado count, or do all kids not count? And this would suggest that in Colorado, not all kids count.
Well, and I think it's important to point that out. And what type of test did we take again?
We took the, the new term for our test now is the CMAS test, the Colorado Measures of, Colorado Measure, help me, Jenny, academic success, because I'm still stuck on PARC. But we do all our testing online, and we have done it online for the last four years, Jenny?
And why is that important?
Because Colorado also allows some school districts to use a paper version of the test. And when you're using a paper version of the test, it is not as cognitively rigorous as the online version.
Okay, so my point in this little academic exercise, this is, you're always talking, Ryan, about parent participation. We're not having people take, take a knee, if you will, when it comes to testing in our school district. Our parents and guardians are stepping up and making sure that their students are coming to class, and they recognize the importance of the tests and what it means for the success of their students. Our teachers are stepping up, our principals sometimes go door-to-door, Cindy, and say, "Come on, we need you to come to class and take the test." And we're doing it following the state standards. We are not hiding behind a less rigorous test. That, to me, is one of the most important numbers that we see after having been through, I think, five iterations of testing since I've been on the board. That's correct. And that is the true testament to all the hard work that's going on from the superintendent down to everybody in the school district, every job, every classification. That is why we felt very strongly in putting our money where our mouth is and why on the 28th of September, when everybody gets their paycheck in the district, they get $1,000 bonus. Thank you. We appreciate that hard work. And that's where we can tell the state kiss off.
Well, thank you. And our focus is really on the day after graduation for students. We want them leaving us knowing how to jump right into that career and take off in their career. So, we've built our system around that. We do know that the assessment and accountability system does not align with our competency-based system. But even in this flawed model, we are still showing progress.
Their flawed model.
Yes, their flawed model, not ours.
And one last statement. We are, I think, the only district that has this pattern of achievement. And this is actually, in spite of the flawed accountability system, our system is working. And we have three years of PARC data or CMAS data to demonstrate that. And I think we're the only CBS district in the country that can say that with hard data.
That is correct. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to business items. We have item 8.1, Personnel Matters with Mr. Kirk Lade.
Mr. President, members of the board and Dr. Swanson, I've prepared for you a personnel report containing items 1.0, 3.0, 4.0, and 5.0 for your consideration and approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve Personnel Matters as presented on item 1.0, 3.0, 4.0, and 5.0.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No comments. Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantro?
Yes.
Mr. David Ek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valente?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 8.2, we have a competency-based system resolution that I am bringing to the board. I will tell you, every year since I've sat at this table, we have had a resolution to continue to support our CBS model. And this is something that we do as tradition to continue and signal to the community our support for CBS.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the board. Dr. Swanson, I have the honor of reading to you a resolution to build upon the proven success of the Westminster Public Schools competency-based system by embracing a culture of continuous improvement. Whereas Westminster Public Schools remains committed to ensuring that all students receive a quality and culturally responsive education every day based upon the belief that students should attain a level of competency at one level of core content before moving on to the next level in their education. And whereas Westminster Public Schools has high expectations for all students and staff and where education is personal reflects the commitment of its students, staff, and community to improving education outcomes for all. And whereas Westminster Public Schools is committed to ending social promotion by placing focus and emphasis on measurable learning over time rather than advancement by seat time or age-based cohorts. And whereas Westminster Public Schools' learning model is a competency-based system and played a critical role in the ongoing improvement of student achievement and growth scores across the district, moving Westminster Public Schools into the improvement category and off the state accountability clock. And whereas Westminster Public Schools believes that the most important day for students is the day after graduation. And whereas Westminster Public Schools' competency-based system is the most effective education model to equip students for the skills necessary to succeed in the competitive global economy. And whereas Westminster Public Schools' Board of Education is committed to collective accountability and expands partnerships with Advance Ed and Marzano Academies while supporting the shared vision and mission as expressed in the Vision 2020 Strategic Plan. And whereas Westminster Public Schools is duly accredited by Advance Ed and the state of Colorado, be it resolved that from this date forward, based upon the foregoing statements, Westminster Public Schools will continue the use of our competency-based system in all district schools with the clear understanding that continuous improvement is a basic tenet of an effective education model dated and signed by the Directors of the Westminster Public Schools Board of Education this 11th day of September, 2018.
Thank you. Do we need him to repeat it? Do I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education adopt the resolution dated September 11th, 2018 to deepen the systemic implementation of Westminster Public Schools' competency-based system.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any comments?
One. Dr. Swanson, can you, there's a new term that might be unfamiliar to some people in there, collective accountability?
Sometimes when we do presentations like this evening, people might think of that as public accountability. And while it may be that, in our system, it takes all of us to lift each other up and our children up and raise academic achievement. So, to that end, we're using the term collective accountability. Regardless of our position in the school district, leadership matters at all levels.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, Veronica, please pull the board.
Mr. Chantro?
Yes.
Mr. David Ek?
Aye.
Mr. Math?
Aye.
Mr. McCoy?
Aye.
Mr. Valente?
Aye.
The resolution passes. Thank you. Before we get on to meeting notification, I'd like to acknowledge all the principals who are here in attendance who did not have educational reports. I appreciate you coming and standing with your colleagues who did present tonight. I also appreciate the staff who showed up to support the principals and all the hard work that you have all done. It does not go unnoticed by the board, so thank you so much for being here. With that said, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Westminster Public Schools, an advanced ed-accredited organization, will be Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. The regular meeting will be held in the lecture hall of Westminster High School. Notices of meetings are posted in the window at the main entrance of Westminster High School and on board docs 24 hours before each meeting. Veronica, guess what? It's 7:31 p.m., and we are adjourned.